All right, welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Will you please, I called the order, excuse me, I called the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of November 20th, 2019 to order. Would you please rise and stand and do the pledge of allegiance with me? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would you please call the roll?
Jim Harris. Lucas Steele. Michael Gordon.
Here.
Doug Hardy.
Here.
Donald Bergen.
Here.
Dan McGowan.
Here.
Chad Nelson.
Here.
Susanna Ballard.
Here.
Danny White. Kevin Murphy.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the election of officers. Normally, the, since we don't have a chair and a vice chair here today, I'm starting the meeting, and then the election of officers is going to happen now, and then after that, the new chairman will take over the meeting. So with that, I take it to the commission to please make recommendations for officers, please. Thank you.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a recommendation for Jim, Jim Harris to remain as the chair and Michael Gordon as vice chair.
I second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, please vote on the item. Thank you.
Motion approved, five to zero.
Now, since the newly elected chair is not here, Michael Gordon is the vice chair. Will you please take over the rest of the meeting?
Oh, there it goes. All right. Thank you, Luke. Okay, thank you, everyone. Welcome to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of September 18th, 2019. The first item today is approval of, I believe, we've already done the election of officers.
We're looking for the approval of the minutes now?
Okay. First, we need to see Ms. Ballard, who's here, to fill one of our vacant spots. Would you come on up? You still have the election of officers on the screen. There we go. We're good. All right, our first item today is the meeting minutes from the last meeting. Do anybody, do I have a motion to approve, accept the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
I second it.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Go ahead and take a vote.
Wait for me just a minute. Yeah. Yeah, the thing's walking slow today. I don't know what's wrong with mine.
All right, thank you. Our first public hearing item today, Luke?
Yes.
Oh, I need to introduce it. There we go. All right, our first item today is a request for a major planned development amendment of PD 05-002-00008, the shops of Lake Havasu. A request...
Mr. Chairman, I believe you, that may be a different...
Sorry.
That's okay.
All right, I'll start over. Here we go. Good morning. Our first item today is a request for a conditional use permit, number 20-003-0001, to allow a vacant property to be used as an outdoor event area, including electrical service, for a term of two years without providing the required parking improvements in the MU UMS Mixed Use Uptown McCulloch Main Street District, track 100, block 5, lot 17, 2101 McCulloch Boulevard North. Mr. Morris?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, commissioners.
You're welcome.
As you may have noticed, this request is made at the behest of the PED, the Partnership for Economic Development, and James Gray. The property is located in a central part of town in Main Street area. The property is in Main Street area on McCulloch Boulevard. The address is 2101 McCulloch Boulevard. It's, on this aerial, you'll see there's a vacant lot. It has developed properties on both sides with buildings and parking, and it's at McCulloch and Querrio, in that, near that area. The site is currently being used as part of the First Fridays in an area that's marketed as Yard City. It was originally approved as a catalyst for First Fridays. It was approved by staff and allowed to have limited improvements for the site. These are some pictures of the events that happened at First Fridays that were supplied by the PED. In here, you'll see some of the improvements that are allowed at this point. There's a fence, a perimeter fence, there's some portable toilets, there's some lighting, artificial turf, some pavers, a food and slash beverage truck, and then they get power for all this by using generators at this point.
That's the one we always have.
So that's the First Friday event, and the PED anticipates this would be growing, this use will be growing in this area for popularity, and they tried to have more events for the area.
Where's this one?
So they're planning to add some more things to the, more improvements to the property. So in addition to the current improvements, they're asking to add a stage here on one side of it, a multi-tier, a multi-tier platform near the rear, if you will, and then a permanent power so they don't have to run generators. Now, this use is all fine. It's allowed in the use, in that Uptown McCulloch Main Street District, but it's supposed, the property's supposed to be improved. That would be parking and everything, it's supposed to be part of the improvements. So here's the parking plan for that area, here's the lot in question, and the area that they're using right now is here, and then the parking area in the back is supposed to be improved, matching the areas on either side of it, basically. So in this case, staff felt the appropriate mechanism to allow it without these improvements to the parking lot would be through this conditional use permit process. And the applicant's asking for two years for this use permit without necessarily improving the parking lot, and then if they want to go beyond those two years, then it'll be reexamined. So this use permit would be good for two years, unless they improve the parking lot, if, once they improve that parking lot to the development standards, then they wouldn't need the use permit, and then they'd be fine, they wouldn't have to renew it. So with that concludes the staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Is the applicant present? Would you like to address the commission?
Good morning. It's good to be here.
Please state your name.
James Gray.
An address for the record.
James Gray, 2235 Sneed Drive. I am the director of the Partnership for Economic Development.
I'll just start over. Michael got to start over, I'll start over. James Gray, 2235 Sneed Drive. I am the director of the Partnership for Economic Development. We, out of one of our programs, Creative Comrades, we, they really wanted to have an impact on developing culture in downtown. It really aligned with a lot of the objectives that we have as we are looking to develop, as you can see right next to it, the Downtown Catalyst Project, a lot like we've done with the coworking space. We created a pilot program first, right? So instead of spending all the money and then inviting the people, you start like a startup, and First Friday very much works that way. It's about developing culture now. It is about supporting artists and the local businesses down there. It operates three hours a month right now, six to nine on the First Friday. Love to have you down there. And we did it at a very modest investment to gauge interest, to see what would work, what would not work, and what people wanted. It's been incredibly successful. We're getting a lot of support from the businesses on Main Street, and so with that, we've also had a lot of requests. How do we use it? Why is it, why is it dark the rest of the month? How can we utilize this facility? It's, it's really cool. We want to be in downtown. It's, as you know, our, our town is incredibly good at events, and so this is a very, you know, I would call it, probably a term you're going to hear a lot today, micro. You know, it's a micro little event center. It doesn't, doesn't draw a lot of attraction, but we, we, with a lot of partners, have created a really cool little niche down there. People like it. They like the fact that we improved it. They love the aesthetics of it, and so for us, we really believe that we have a two-year commitment to this space, but based on the fact that we hope that we have a larger project on the, on the catalyst spot coming. So that is our purpose. It is aligned with the Vision 2020. It is mainly one of the tenants going against demographic starvation, trying to create culture for young people and young professionals. One of the things that I said the other night, we literally have had requests for stroller parking. I don't know, you know, I attend a lot of events in Lake Havasu. That's kind of a new one for us. We have to figure out, but that, that speaks a lot for what we're trying to do. We're young families that want to be in a collective dense area, they want to be able to have their kids with them, and we think we provide that. Now, Yard City is not in the context of First Fridays. It's not necessarily something we want people to come down and be there for three hours, and in fact, we track them. All sales are digital, so we watch them. And so generally, the time commitment for someone that comes down there is about an hour. They come into Yard City, they kind of get the theme of the evening, and then they move on, which is exactly what we want, is a distribution and creating new habits of experiencing our downtown, which is literally having somewhat of a revival down there. That's a terrible word for it, but it is definitely coming back in the lower section. It's having, has great density down there. People are staying open. We're not trying to have to convince them, and they want to be a part of it. So at the end of it, it is fulfilling the objectives that we started. It's just now we're being, other people are asking us to utilize that, and we don't want to say no, because that's the whole reason we built it, is to get people in downtown on a regular basis. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them. Thank you. And does anyone on the commission have any questions of the applicant? Mr. Nelson?
I just have a question. The, in the, in the overhead picture, you know, it's just a dirt parking lot, and are people parking there anyway? Is it flat?
Well, I mean, there is, the, the best way I would understand that is, we did a parking study back in 2007, and the closest you could get to full capacity of everything within a half mile of the downtown, which is, you know, one block away, was, was 50%. And after six, it would drop to 15%. And so parking is not a problem. We would love for parking to be a problem, and so...
But you're, it's not blocked off?
It's not blocked off. People, people are parking back there.
Okay. That was my only question.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Bergen?
To follow up on that a little bit, I, there is some concern about how this will affect the parking of your adjacent businesses in, in the back there.
Okay, well, the best way I can answer that is, people are incredibly encouraged that we have a group of volunteers out of Creative Comrades that are literally bringing thousands of people to the street. So for them, it's great customer acquisition. We've yet to hear a complaint about parking. What we are hearing is, how do we engage with you to make sure that they know what we're doing and what we're offering? And so we're creating partnerships. So we, we haven't been asked a parking question yet, and so we're not experiencing that. Thank you. Other questions, applicant? Thank you. This is a public hearing, so I will open it up now to the public. Is there anyone in the public audience that wishes to speak? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Good morning, everyone, and counsel. I just want to first say that I've been inspirin', inspired and driven for music and art programs in this community for years. I was the original owner of Jay's Cigar Bar, where we brought in open mics and a stage and live entertainment, and Mr. Hardy and I can agree that when we had to build that building, we were the only ones on McCulloch that had to have underground, underground utilities, handicap ramps, handicap bathrooms, and everything above. I took that building and we made it even more beautiful than what I originally planned because Main Street was going to do something phenomenal 20-something years ago. I don't remember the exact date and time that I built that, but I'm totally for supporting all of this. I just would love to see planning and zoning have a consistency. There seems to be a lot of conditional use permits out there that don't make sense to somebody that, like myself, who was under super strict guidelines on parking. I had a plan for a big cigar bar that I had two years, I don't know...
I am so sorry to cut you off, but this has to be just about this item.
Okay.
And then just all of the public, you can bring up all of this other stuff.
Okay, I appreciate that, but just some consistency is all I'm asking for, and absolutely support the music and art programs. Kind of, kind of hard. Thank you much.
Thank you.
My name is Jean Blue. I own a condo directly behind there in Visidel Soul. You can just see part of the building if you look in the upper right, kind of diagonally behind, yeah, right there. And so I, the fellow mentioned there's been no issues with parking. I totally disagree. If you can bring that picture down a little bit to show our parking area for Visidel Soul, is that possible? Oh, I'm sorry, I can see the parking lot right there. That's our parking lot. Whenever there's a function downtown, every function downtown, people park all over in our parking lot. When we come home, we may not have a parking spot. And you see, you can't tell necessarily from the photograph, but there's stones between the, the obvious dark asphalt area of our parking lot and the alleyway with the white stripe. We have borders which we've constructed of rocks, we've tried to make them out of railroad ties, they get run over. People run them over, they're laying in the alley half the time after a downtown function. So parking is an issue in that particular area. It, from our perspective, in our building, anyways, I'm not kidding, people double park, you can't get in, you can't get out. It's like they have no respect for even us getting into our garage sometimes. They park in front of our garage, and, and what are we to do? So parking is an issue. It's important, I think. I don't object to the, the plan and the downtown development, it's all great, but parking is certainly an issue. So for the fellow who presented that and said, eh, it hasn't been discussed yet, it has. We, and then, I'm in favor at all too, if they can just do it a little quieter. They drive us crazy with the bands and stuff, especially BJ's, and it just never stops. Even though you guys imposed fines and stuff for noise, it doesn't work. People have been sold and moved out of the condo because they can't take it. My parents are one couple. They won't live there. They live in an RV and an RV park because they can't stay in their condo because of the noise. That's my position.
Quick question for you, sir. If I may?
Yes.
On, so this, this, this property's just been public on, on the first Friday of every month. Is there, do you have, you know, are you having issues on those days, or just, are you just talking about events in general?
I'm talking about event, events in general.
Okay.
I can't say specifically that on a particular Friday that there was a particular issue, but when we have events downtown, when they block the street and there's functions going on, at those times, parking, you know, come down and check it out sometime. Parking is crazy, in the back. They park everywhere.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, appreciate your concern. Obviously, that's a bigger issue that could probably be addressed to the city at some point.
That would be something to bring up in the public hearing portion, I think.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, I'm Jackie Leatherman, 2041 Magnolia Drive Apartment 4 here in LHC. I also work for Go Lake Havasu Tourism Bureau, so I support the over 400 events that we have here in Lake Havasu City. I help with their logistics. I help create events, and I start events in our city as well. I have to, you know, applaud how quickly and organically that this event has been for our city, and I've volunteered down there and I've worked down there and was able to see the logistics firsthand, and I, from my knowledge and my experience with all of the events here in Lake Havasu City, I did not see a parking logistical problem in the rear in relation to this event. I do, I would say the only issue that I saw was, was trying to keep people to the crosswalks. That was the only major issue, but in my knowledge, I did not see any parking issues back there. And I, this space is very well needed and welcomed for our event community here in Havasu.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to address, address the commission on this item? Please state your name for the record.
My name is Sharon Saul, and I am a resident of Arizona and live in the condo that Mr. Blue talked about, and my issue is the parking lot. If they want to have this business, which is what it is, why don't they want to finish that parking space that looks like a junkyard? You know, people throw trash there, they, they use the dumpsters that are there, and it's just, you know, if he has stroller parking issues already, why don't they finish that, that spot? That's my only concern. It looks ugly, it's just a bunch of rocks and dirt, and it is an issue. I can see it from my, my condo.
Yeah, understand.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the commission on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public here. Yes. Mr. Gray? I'll just make one last, one last comment. This is just a demonstration site. It is, it's not a business. All the money that we do make goes back into the First Friday and funding artists. If this was to go past two years, we're committed to doing the parking lot and the finishes, but like I said, we're trying to keep the cost down, create the culture, do it in the right way with neighbors. So with some of the complaints we have, I think maybe we can start mitigating some of the stuff in the back just on our own, because we're not down there to create friends on one side and enemies on the other, so we can definitely be self-policing, you know? We're, I'm, I'm in the customer acquisition business and, and creating value for people, so we can definitely start working with low-level parameters, but we wanted to keep our original investment down in this space, but we're always understood that if, if the owner was going to turn it into an event space afterwards, it could be rented out or whatever was going to become of it, that this place would have to be finished 100%. So that's something we understand, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. Appreciate those comments. I think some self-policing would be good for the neighbors. It is parking in common in the back, but some signage or, or ropes during events or something to help assist might be a good thing. Yes, go ahead, please come forward, please, please come to the microphone and, and ask on the record, please, state your name.
Hi, I'm Diane Robinson, and I also live at 24, or 2094 Mesquite, just directly behind, and my questions are to you. Some of the things that my fellow residents and I have been talking about is...
I'm sorry, ma'am, to interrupt you. You can ask questions, but you just have to direct all your comments to the commission. They can redirect and ask the applicant to come back up. I apologize, but just, you just have to, just face the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
As we, as I was saying, my fellow residents and I were concerned or just wanting to know more information about the plans for the area, such as how often will there be events there? The length, what hours are you planning on having the events there? I mean, yeah, the, the parking is a problem when there's a huge thing going on downtown, but if you're going to be using that several nights a week or, you know, into the late hours, those are some concerns that we have that we kind of like to know about, and so that's why I was wanting to ask the questions of the people that want to use this, how they were going to use it, and I'd just like to have, you know, you know, their, their plans, their thoughts, so that, you know, we can have some informed information for the rest of the people that we live with.
Absolutely. I'm assuming the applicant, Mr. Gray, will be happy to answer those questions. Thank you. So a couple, first of all, First Fridays is six to nine, and we do close down at, at nine. We stop selling alcohol at about 8:45, and again, our whole purpose is to distribute people out into the street, and we have a lot of, I won't call them like partners, but allies in creating entertainment in these spaces, and we want them to go right there and, and continue on with their night. As far as other functions, we have a couple of things on the docket. We tried to do it this year, going through this process has pushed it back a little bit, but we were going to run a Christmas movie series in there, and so you're talking about probably the latest that it would be open is 10 o'clock at night if we ran a double feature. We have an agreement to do a TED Talk series, which is really educational for entrepreneurs, and that probably wouldn't go past eight. And then we have a series with the Better Business Bureau planned on, for small business. That's one of the reasons for the small platform, the A there, is we'll be able to run projectors on both sides, bring people into a social environment, but they're still entrepreneurs that are trying to better themselves and, and work on their business. As far as a lot of events, I don't see that happening because this is really run by volunteers, and it's not a business, and so would we, we want to take opportunities to allow nonprofits and other people in the community that are, that are driving culture and things that... that are driving culture, uh, and things of that nature. But, uh, I, I don't, we've never discussed a time period, but I can't imagine, uh, we, we had a, we had an event in there and we, we gave them an eleven o'clock, uh, shut off time. Um, we'd think that that's reasonable, um, year round. Um, again, you can go to some of our, um, partner places that can stay open to the very length of what's reasonable. And we already have that and they're literally within walking distance if people want to go past that, so this is not something that is ever designed to be open late. If anything, it, it is a catalyst for the street, meaning that it's a starter place. Um, and that's how we view it, is, uh, uh, early evening, if you will. But we take all your comments, um, and in fact, uh, I will leave my contact information so that uh, the condo owners can just directly start contacting me with their issues. Um, and I just think that'd be a, a, a better, more productive way, so, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Any other, uh, comments from the public on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, uh, bring it back to staff for their recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. Based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends that conditional use permit number twenty dash zero zero three zero 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 one be allowed, uh, to allow a vacant property to be used as an outdoor event area, including electrical service for a term of two years without providing the required parking improvements in the MU UMS District on track one hundred, block five, lot seventeen, be approved with the following conditions. Number one, the use shall, uh, shall be allowed for a term of two years from the date of approval. After that time, if the parking lot is not improved in compliance with the Parking and Common Master Plan for that track, block and lot, uh, then the owner applicant and the, and the owner applicant wishes to continue the approved uses, an application for the extending the conditional use permit must be submitted for Planning Commission review. Two, an electrical permit shall be submitted to, shall be submitted to install a new power pole. Three, gates shall remain locked when not in use. And four, a site plan shall be submitted for review and approval by Fire, Building and the Planning Divisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Commissioners, uh, any comments, questions on this item? Mr. Bergen.
I think I would like to see this done with a one-year test period. Is that possible?
Well, the Planning Commission can, you're the, you're the ones who decide, so if you want to make an amendment to that, you're certainly within your realm to do so.
Other comments, questions, otherwise, uh, we are at the table and I'll entertain a motion.
Well, my only comment is that the use is already approved, so they can already do what they're doing. There's nothing to stop them from what they're currently doing, so they could continue to, um, to do the events and the only thing that's gonna be the, the difference is they'll have power instead of running generators. Um, whether they have a parking lot there or not, they're still gonna, they're still gonna have parking issues, um, if there is issues down there. I think, in my mind, it's just whether you're running generators or not. Um, if, if we go to a year or two years, um, I don't, I think it can make a difference, I, I, I think everybody would love to see the parking lot improved. But the, the difference is just power or no, or no power or generators. And I would imagine those would be a nuisance too, but I don't, I don't really know, because I don't live down there.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
For clarification, Mr. Morris, doesn't it also have to factor in like permanent improvements?
Well, thank you, what I wanted to bring to, make sure, clarify is that the use is allowed now as the, the first Friday, one, one Friday each month is all that's allowed right now with the way it's been operating. If they're looking to increase those uses, make them more frequent, add more uses, then that's what's prompting us to say, hey, now this is more like a more permanent sort of thing, because you're adding a stage, you're adding some tiers, things that are more permanent in nature, if you will, not as temporary. And in conjunction with that, if you're developing your property for something, you need to develop it, the whole property, including the parking lot. In this case, uh, if they're gonna, let's say this got denied, it wouldn't mean first Fridays necessarily would go away. That would, would mean they're certainly allowed to, we would allow them to do the first Fridays, I would presume, but additional events wouldn't ha, be able to happen, because now they're adding this, this, uh, platform and the, the stage and the permanent power. And we're considering that more permanent improvement, so the parking lot would need to be improved. This use permit is all, is saying, hey, you can go two years doing what you want to do, but at the end of two years, either that parking lot needs to be paved, improved, or we're done with the use permit. Hopefully that helps.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Bergen?
I think what you're talking, what they're talking about is a- also extending this into the, the rear lot to the alley, uh, with a stage and whatnot, and, uh, I, I think it's quite a bit more than what they're doing right now. And, uh, and I, 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 I would have to stay with a one-year test.
Mr. Morris, please clarify, I believe all the improvements are staying within the original footprint, correct?
That's correct.
Within the walled area?
Here's a view of the parking area and, and the area that they're doing the events at this point and proposing the future is this area where the, where the buildings could be built, if you will, here. So this is the buildable area here, and then the back is the parking, so they're not proposing to do or spill over into the parking area as, for these events. They're only gonna do them in the area between the fences, if you will, where the buildings could be built. So they're not proposing to go out into the parking lot, um, at this point, I mean, they, they wouldn't be allowed to build a building in the parking lot, they'd have or do uses in the parking lot unless it's some special event, one-time sort of thing, but at this point, they're not asking to do anything in the parking lot, they're asking that the parking lot remain that way for at least two years. And then, uh, the events would only take place in the area where the buildings are, where they are now, where the, the fenced-in area is.
So the parking lot stay, stays as dirt?
That's what they're requesting, they're asking that stay as dirt or not be improved for at least two years.
Did that help clarify, Mr. Bergen? That a little bit, thank you. Other comments, questions, or I'll entertain a motion on this item? I'm sorry, the public hearing's closed at this point. We are at the table for a motion.
Any more discussion?
Hearing none, I'm sorry, we can't, the, the public hearing's closed, we can't. Not at this point, thank you.
I'm sorry, it's okay, it's okay, we have a lot of new guests today and there are rules and procedures that we had to follow, so the public hearing was opened and it was closed now, um. No, no, we, you can, we can ask permission of the chair to allow you to get up and, and make a comment if you'd like to, but just that's outside of the procedure and so it would just be a polite question to the chair, do entertain a very quick comment? And then it would give the applicant also an opportunity to respond, so if you'd like to make a really quick comment and that's okay with the commission, um, we can certainly entertain that.
Okay, I, I'm okay with opening it back up to address your concerns, so please.
Generally, that's not allowed and, and so please, please bear with us, that, those are the rules.
All right, so we'll go ahead and open the public comment period back up, if you would, please come to the microphone and state your name again.
I'm Dana Morris. And that was written up before we even came here, so I knew we were not going to win the improvements on, on the parking lot. But could we ask them to please rake it down? Move the boilers, the screws, the nails, everything so people could park there, because they don't, as you see in the picture.
Thank you. Anyone else like to add to that or address anything else? Please state your name for the record.
Sharon Saul, and I'm at Vista del Sol also. And my understanding then is that this is only gonna be a first Friday event. Is that what?
What, what the applicant?
This gentleman just.
Cur- currently, it is allowed to be a first Friday event.
For the next two years, that's all it's gonna be?
No, what they're asking for today, for the next two years, is the right to do additional days, other than just the first Friday. And in lieu of that, they have, they're making some improvements and asking for a conditional use permit in order to use that more than just the first Friday.
Okay, and then, uh, the portable toilets are inside the structure.
They are, correct.
That they put up. And there's a locked door on the alley side, on the backside, what are the, uh?
It's okay.
I don't know how to word this, I'm sorry, but we have a lot of, I don't know if they're vagrants or what they are, but, uh.
Transient folks?
Thank you.
Yes.
The alley does get to be, uh.
Yeah, one of the conditions that is in this, um, proposed action is.
Are the police going to be available to patrol this? I mean, it, it, I mean, you can't, they break into our condos.
Sure.
I mean.
One of the, one of the conditions, if I can address that for you, one of the conditions is that the gates have to remain locked when the space is not in use, so it will be gated and locked. I can't address, uh, the, the police issue, I'm sure it's within their area that they monitor on a regular basis.
Yeah, because these walls that they put up aren't even, I mean, you can go knock it down for crying out loud if you wanted to, and there are people that want to, just to, you know.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's my only concern.
Thank you, I'll, um, thank you. I'll allow Mr. Gray to address a couple of those comments and potentially the, uh, question about some
Sure.
um, partial improvements, if you will, to the
Okay.
Dirt parking lot.
Kind of moving thing, um. So just a couple of things on the gates, they are full panic hardware as the city requested. Um, and, uh, if you've been down there, I think you understand the type of construction, uh, both to the aesthetics, but also to, to make, um, a real improvement to the downtown. We, we didn't put up chain link or something like that. Um, it's, it's very pleasing to, to the eye and then also the structure. As far as the long-term, um, the, the couple platforms, those are all pavers. So, um, that's not something that is necessarily a structural issue, you know, those are just, no, nothing passes the thirty-inch uh, retaining, it's, it's, it's literally just pavers and the platform is ten inches, so, um, and is not adhered to the ground in any way, so, um, and just, just want to clarify a couple of those things. Um, as far as the one or two-year commitment, um, we've allocated with our partners a certain amount of dollars to get to the two years, so for us, um, you know, we're not, we're, we're not gonna tell a bunch of volunteers no and artists when they've got something, uh, going. Um, I guess we'll figure it out, but, um, it would be a bit of a hardship to come back in one year, because literally all these dollars are going back into creating the culture, the art, the music, the installations, the engagement, the partnerships with the restaurants, the, the studios, uh, all, all the businesses, so um, if we have to shorten that time window of, it, it, it just becomes a bit harder, so, so we'd request that. Now, as, now as far as, um, as I, as I stated before, um, we, as of today, um, have had no complaints on the back. As of today, I've heard those complaints and we can address those, um, uh, both in a, a function of the event. Um, and, and then also some low-level improvements to, uh, make sure that it's, uh, more aesthetic and, and better back there, so, um, we're certainly willing to, to work on those premises. Um, and, um, I guess, eh, you know, alls we can say is we're here to build partnerships with, um, businesses, but also with community, so, um, if we have, um, residents next door that feel that way about it, uh, we'll just take it in our own hands and we'll have that done this week, we'll just have it cleaned up, you know? That's the best way we can do it, you know, so.
Perfect.
Anyways, I hope that answered your question.
Thank you, yes, I appreciate that, and I think, uh, I appreciate you working with the neighbors to do that. And I think some, eh, for very minimal cost, a little grading and cleanup on that would make that a sliver of parking lot usable. Um, and possibly even striping it with some chalk or something, so the public understands that they can park on it and use it, just like the rest of the parking in common. So I appreciate that. Uh, at this point, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing again and, uh, bring it back. Any other final comments or questions by the commission, otherwise I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ID one nine dash two two one zero, a request to approve conditional use permit. Uh, number two zero dash zero zero three zero 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 one, to allow vacant property to be used as an outdoor event area, including electrical service for a term of two years without providing, uh, required parking improvements in the MU dash UMS, uh, district. With the following additional condition, that the parking area be cleared of any rocks or debris, uh, to allow parking before the next first Friday event.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Nelson with one additional condition.
I'll second the motion.
And a second by Mr. McGowan. Uh, any other comments or questions on this item before we take a vote? Mr. Bergen?
Considering the, as, as we've talked about, the stage being added, uh, kind of leaving the back all in dirt and, uh, I can see increasing the noise quite a bit for those, uh, people that have residences right there. And, um, a- as I say, if this, if, if we could have done it with a, a test of one year, I, I, I would have gone along with it, but otherwise I cannot.
Thank you, any other comments? And we'll go ahead and take a vote.
Motion passes five to one.
Congratulations. Uh, the next item today is a re, ID number nineteen dash two two zero five, a request for a zoning map change of track twenty-two zero eight, block thirteen, parcel L, and track twenty-two seventeen, block nine, lots three and four. Um, from R one, residential single-family district, and R three, limited multifamily district, to an R three PD, limited multifamily plan development district, with a use not to exceed six point nine nine units per acre. Mr. Morris?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Morris, I'm so sorry to interrupt. It might be helpful at this point just to explain the process, just real quick before we get into the next item, so it's gonna be exactly the same as what we just went through. So staff is gonna give a presentation on the item and then the applicant will also have an opportunity to give a presentation. After that, it'll be brought back to the commission, the commission has an opportunity to ask questions of staff or the applicant or discuss the item preliminarily between themselves. Then the commission will open it up to the public, during that time, the public can come up and make any comments germane to this item only. Then we'll go through the public comment, then the applicant will have an opportunity to rebut. Um, at that time, there may be some additional time for comments from the audience, depending on, on where the issue or item goes. After that, the public hearing will be closed, after that, the public isn't allowed to speak on this particular item anymore. So if you have anything to say, anything that comes up, that's the time to say it. Um, it'll come back to the commission, the commission or staff will give its recommendation, staff will discuss, or commission will discuss more, and then they'll go on and make their motion and decide on the item. If you have your smartphone here or laptop, the item. If you have your smartphone here or laptop, the item, the, the agenda and all the background information is on the city's website. So if you go to LHCAZ.gov, you pull up the commission agenda, you can read all the background information there, if you want any additional information on the item, which also includes staff recommendations, um, and any background information. So, sorry, thanks, Luke.
Mr. Morris?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. This property is located on the southwest, excuse me, the southeast portion of town. Here's an aerial of the, of the area. In, around the area, there are, um, it's in the area of Buena Vista Boulevard between Oro Grande Boulevard and McCulloch Boulevard. And it's currently has five-point-seven-six acres overall. It has access, uh, from Buena Vista and a little one-off Indian Hills. Um, I would zoom in a little more, show the zoning map. Um, right now, there are two different zoning districts. There's one piece of property that's owned R-one here, the large piece. It's about just over five acres, and it was acquired through a prob, a public property sales process. And then there are two smaller lots here that are zoned R-three. You'll notice that the, the majority of the property, this large piece, it backs to the backyards of residential zone property, R-one zone properties. And then there's a, a developed R-three property that is, it backs to also. And then these two R-three, currently zoned R-three pieces, um, have properties, uh, developed on either side of them. Uh, a question is, maybe to elaborate a little more, a PD, a planned development, why aren't they just rezoning this all to R-three? It could be a question. And the R-three zoning is a multiple-family zoning. It does allow single-family uses and things like that. But there's a density of R-three, they're allowed to go up to ten dwelling units per acre in the R-three zoning. So these two lots that are down here, they're already zoned R-three, they'd be allowed to go up to ten units per acre on those. And if they rezoned the entire piece to R-three, that R-one to R-three, then they would, by that zoning district, be allowed to develop up to ten units per acre. They're coming forward requesting not to exceed, basically not to be over six, not to be, well, to be, not to exceed six-point-nine-nine, so less than seven units per acre. And because they're asking for something that is different than the development, than the zoning standards allow, uh, they're asking for less than what the zoning standards allow. So they're asking, uh, to limit themselves to no more than those seven, no more than seven units per acre on the project, project overall. Whereas if they were applying for an R-three straight-up RZ, R-three zone, they could go up to ten units per acre. So they're limiting, they're asking to limit to, to, uh, no more than seven, six-point-nine-nine. Also, if it was more than that, that six or six-point-nine-nine, they'd have to do a general plan amendment for the area. So those two reasons, they're asking to limit this through the PD process, the density, to no more than six-point-nine-nine units per acre. And in this case, that works out to about forty units, um, per acre. This is a conceptual plan that they provided just for their general planning process and to, for their public, their citizens meeting they held, they had this general conceptual plan here. This plan shows Buena Vista Boulevard here, Buena Vista Avenue on the south. There's Indian Hills on the north here, and then Chiricahua to the east. Now, this project, this is again conceptual, it may look a lot like this when it's done, or if it's proposed, but at this point, this is for their planning purposes. They're proposing the main access for this to come off of Buena Vista Avenue into the property. Uh, this larger piece, I'm gonna go back to the zoning map, this larger piece has this little flag lot, if you will, it's got a access off of Indian Hills Drive. It's anticipated, when that's developed, that that would not be a main access, it may be limited to emergency. It would be determined more, um, exactly wh, when the property is actually developed and development plans are, are, are proposed. They're proposing, per their plan, standalone, single-family detached homes. And my understanding, they're gonna try to do condominium, a townhouse condominiums with those. So that would mean, if they did that process, the property, each of these would be individually owned, they would own the, the condo building itself and the footprint of the building, of the land. So that's a condominium plat, townhouse condominium plat. And then, the rest of it would be shared, common area, like any other condominium. They're also showing for, in this plan, some other potential amenities, a swimming pool, it looks like a little cabana or something, I believe this is a retention basin, but, and then parking and common driveways and, um, streets and that sort of thing, internal, not public streets. These would all be internal, like any large condominium project. At this point, there's been no formal infrastructure, uh, development review. The water and wastewater can, systems can handle this, that's not an issue. Anything with traffic impacts would be reviewed. Once an application's made, the city's very good at reviewing applications and making sure they're meeting all the development guidelines. So things like traffic and those things would be addressed at the next stage. At this point, this is what's called entitlement, that the developer's trying to get the zoning in place, so they know pretty, have a pretty good idea of what they can do there. And once they know what they can do, then typically they'll put more money into developing the plans, the more specific plans, layouts, things like that, for condominium plat, if that's what they're gonna do, building permits, things like that. So at this point, this is a conceptual plan, and there, there'd be more, more scrutiny, more review, once they do go to the next stage where they're actually doing more development. Something else, uh, there was, they held a citizens' review meeting on October eleventh. At that meeting, there were concerns about dust, traffic, views, property values, things like that were expressed. The Planning Commission was emailed a copy of their petition, they, uh, had a, they were, they were against this request, so you've got a, a copy of that opposition letter. And furthermore, this is the first of two public hearings. Explain a little bit what the Planning and Zoning Commission does in this case. The Planning and Zoning Commission, um, is a recommending body to the city council on things like rezones and planned developments. So at this meeting, at the end of this meeting, at this item, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation, and that recommendation then will go on to the city council for another public hearing, much like this. And at that city council public hearing, the city council will make the ultimate decision on what to do here. So this is kind of the third public hearing, if you will, there's, there was one citizen meeting, which was held, that the, the developer held, and that's part of the state law for growing smarter, and that was submitted. They held that meeting, and they submitted their review, uh, their report from that meeting. And now we have our first public hearing for the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then after this, there'll be a public hearing before the, uh, city council. That would normally be scheduled for, uh, Christmas Eve, but they're not meeting Christmas Eve, so that meeting will be January fourteenth. So hopefully, I've got, not gone too windy here, but, uh, that's, ends my presentation. Open any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. As was stated earlier, this is a public hearing, we'll start and offer the applicant an opportunity to speak or give a presentation, and then I will open it up to the public for comment. Is the applicant present? Would you wish to address the Planning and Zoning Commission? Please state your name for the record.
Sam Woods, from Biltwell. Uh, Luke did a great job. The, what I could add to it is, I guess there's rumors that it's high-density, which he already issued out, and, uh, rentals are not, they're, they're more luxury standalone, we call them condominiums, but you own the ground underneath. So they're, they're little houses, is all they are.
Okay.
And I, I'd like to open it up to the public, and then I'll just rebuttal everything.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, uh, I'll open it up to the public now. Uh, when you come, please state your name for the record. Uh, first of all, I had a, Mr. Bob Bishop signed up to speak. Bob, if you'd address us first, and then I'll open it up to everyone else.
Morning, everyone. First things first, most of you have seen me, most of you know who I am. I've been coming to Lake Havasu since nineteen sixty-three. I've been living here permanently for the last fifteen years, and I've built two homes in this town. My last home was built on Indian Hills Drive. It was built in an R-one zone, full well-knowing, and looking at the community, what was there, and behind it was a empty piece of property that was, I was told, as well as a few of these people in here were told, it was either a school property, or it was city property, and it was gonna be a park. That's what we were told. Now, there are, in the three hundred feet, that you're supposed to notify the people around the piece of property that's gonna be changed from R-one to, trying to be changed from R-one to R-three, in the three hundred feet, there are fifty pieces of property. I'm sorry, there are eighty piece, pieces of property. R-one is intended to promote and preserve Lake Havasu City's most predominant land use, single-family homes on individual lots in a safe, attractive community setting. That's what R-one is, that comes right out of you folks' manual. We're concerned the rezone will change the character of the neighborhood and the lead to more people, traffic, parking, noise, and overall safety issues. And it will also slow down the value of the properties, or reduce our value of the properties. It will happen. I have gone to a half a dozen real estate people in this town, and every one of them say exactly the same thing. The proposed forty tiny homes do not belong in the middle of a community, they belong where the current infrastructure can handle the increased density. There are, in fact, many vacant lots around town, downtown Havasu that are already zoned for that kind of project. And Biltwell, by the way, is already building there. Tiny homes, or condos, or whatever it is they're building. This appears to be a spot-zone change for personal gain, and we all disagree with it. We would hope that the zoning and committing, planning would not pass this through. For the foregoing reasons, we urge you to vote against this proposal. And by the way, there is a petition, I have it, I've turned it in. There's a petition that's been signed by over fifty people, fifty property owners. And for information, what Luke had talked about, the R-three that's down on Buena Vista, two of those lots are owned by Biltwell. One of the lots has a R-three, um, triplex on it. The other two lots are empty, and I have signatures from all of those people, other than R-three, on this petition not to change the zoning. There are two other lots on there that are completely built on with single-family homes currently. What this is, is an island in the middle of R-one. Why would anybody even think of putting that kind of a community in the middle of all these R-one homes? It's ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. All right, this is a public hearing, so please, uh, anyone that wishes to address the commission, please come forward and state your name for the record.
Hello, I am, uh, Genevieve Newman, Dr. Genevieve Newman, retired from MTC.
Luke.
Mine was the fourth house on Indian Hills.
Thank you.
I'm used to shouting at children. Sorry about that. Uh, mine was the fourth house on Indian Hills, and I moved in in nineteen eighty-nine. I'm very familiar with this property and this neighborhood. It has been a very quiet neighborhood, children playing in the streets, both Chiricahua and in Indian Hills. And I walked my dogs many, many years over this property that they planned to put in a small village. It's a very difficult place to build. I walked it last on Monday. Beautiful views from the top of the hills, very beautiful views, could take a couple very nice luxury homes up there. However, it's opposite the fire station, and it's also opposite what is to be the new high school eventually. And right now, all the children from the area come down to Buena Vista, and then go to Oro Grande. So that you have a lot of foot traffic through there, too. I really doubt that houses such as I see here are going to improve our R-one neighborhood. Now, we just have to say it's all gone, if that's what goes in there. That really belongs closer to the lake, or in smaller parcels, or something like that. They're gonna have a heck of a lot of sand to move, and I drove on Buena Vista this morning you get here, the water has come down and across the road and cut a new channel into that wasteland, which is owned by this, uh, school district, as I understand. As you can see, I'm elderly, it's not going to affect me, I'm further up. I have two lots. My neighbor above me also has a double lot. Down below on Indian Hills Drive, there is this triple lot. We are used to space. On Chiricahua, there is a double lot opposite mine in back, and there's the double lot down, which will be facing this development, the back of it. It is going to just simply destroy the area. And why you would have single-family homes, as I show, a one-bedroom in an area where you're going to have a high school eventually, and we already have the Oro Grande School, and we have two nursery schools in that area. So it's completely, it's out of place, to be honest. And I have, um, a letter to read to you from one of the homeowners who could not be here because they're working. I don't know how many other people are going to speak, but I really think this is a drastic change. And to say that you're going to put them right next to each other, and these descriptions, single-family houses, those are rental sort of things. I don't know what the parking's going to do. What do you do with the boats? What do you do with everything else? I don't think this has been thought through to be able to present to the community around it as is we would welcome it. I don't think we do welcome it. You get the idea? I am not in favor of this development. I would have to say not in my neighborhood. Of course, I won't live that long, probably before the houses get up, but my son will, one son will inherit my house, and another son lives on Chiricahua. So, that's the end of my spiel, and I need to read this letter to you, you said you put it into the record. Okay. To the Lake Havasu Planning and Zoning Commission, to whom it may concern generally. As a homeowner on Chiricahua Drive, I feel that the proposed forty-to-fifty house development off Buena Vista and Indian Hills would radically change the neighborhood. I bought into this neighborhood expecting to be, it to be filled with single-family houses on quarter-acre lots. The proposed change would greatly increase the population density and the traffic. Indian Hills has always been a quiet street, as well as Chiricahua, and the homeowners have always had every reason to believe it would remain so. The spot where the development comes out on Buena Vista is the crest of a small rise, and it's potentially dangerous. It's a difficult spot to see over as you're driving at this point. That was my comment, sorry. The area in question was originally listed as a possible park. It belonged to the city, as I understood. That's mine, too. The proposal amounts to high-density housing, putting in almost as many houses in one small space as are on both Indian Hills Drive and Chiricahua Drive together. I hope the commission will reject the proposal due to the potential to radically alter the existing neighborhood. Thank you. Signed, Alan Newman. And I will get this to you. Thank you for your help.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the commission? Please state your name for the record.
My name is Bill Newell. I live on Indian Hills Drive. I've been there for fifteen years. Again, like this young lady here already said, I was led to believe that that was going to be a park area. And R one, if they do build, would be single-family homes like I have. To bring in forty of these smaller homes, call them luxury homes or what you want, it's still going to be a traffic problem. You're going to have just more traffic than you can possibly handle. And I am definitely against this. I wish I'd have known ahead of time that they were planning to do this. I recommend that the council do disapprove this. Leave it as R one as it is. If they want to build homes there, build homes that'll fit in an R one lot, which will fit into the rest of what the property is.
Thank you. Yes, please state your name for the record.
My name's Rex Cross. My wife and I built on thirty-seven twenty Indian Hills Drive, nineteen ninety-six. We back up to this property. My concerns are with all the other people that have spoken already. One question I have with staff, though, if I could address him, is he's talking about the R three could be ten units per acre, and that they're proposing six-point-nine units per acre. That's if the thing gets rezoned to R three. But if it stays R one, which is what it's originally been proposed or is right now, only that little piece at the bottom is R three, what's the density of that? Four units per acre, correct?
The R one zoning district, if I may, Commissioner, Chairman?
Yes, please.
The R one zoning district does allow up to four units per acre, but this is one lot, so this single lot zoned R one would allow one residence.
In the R one zoning, would only allow one resident on this?
As the property that's zoned R one.
Which is the five-acre piece.
Right, that allows a single-family home. The way it is right now, it allows a single-family home. The R three, the two R three lots off of Buena Vista allow up to ten units per acre.
Yes.
The way it is right now, correct?
Yes.
For clarification, though, Mr. Morris, I think it's important to point out that because it's one parcel today, it would allow only one residence.
So what they have to-
If they wanted to do something R one, and this is an important point to note, the four units per acre, they could come back and propose something more than one residence, but it would be a subdivision of that larger parcel in order to create up to four units per acre on the larger parcel.
Right, they'd come back with the same proposed plan they have, except instead of forty units, it'd be a maximum of possibly twenty units.
Correct, four or under per acre, yes.
They just have to apply for a subdivision and do the same thing they're going to do here, except stick with this current-
Correct. It would not be a rezone at that point if they went, if it went that route, but it would be a subdivision process.
Correct. And that's what I would like to see happen there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the commission?
Name's Charles Marin. I live at thirty-seven fifteen Indian Hills. When I bought that place back in two thousand and six, I looked at a plot map to make sure, because as you drive up Oro Grande, you see all kinds of double occupancy structures, duplexes. And I wanted to make sure that that wasn't going to happen in the neighborhood I was buying in. I looked at the plot map, saw that the existing one-acre, five-acre parcel was set up as an R one, and I was good with that because I don't think that the traffic issues are going to be affected by one single-family dwelling. However, if the board approves this zoning change, that's going to drastically change the neighborhood, going to change the travel. People right now that live along the way come barreling down Indian Hills and create hazards for people's pets and children and even slow-moving adults. They show on the map that the road would come out on Indian Hills, which is basically right across the street from my house. They, I've heard that they said that's not going to be a major access into the property. But I also know human nature. And human nature is that if there's a road there and an access to get out, the people at the top of that proposed zone would be going out Indian Hills, which increased the traffic problems tremendously. I do not like, want to see that this zoning change go through. I think it should stay as an R one residential lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the audience wish to address the commission? Please state your name for the record. Thank you.
My name is Jane Strain, and I live on Reservation Drive, two streets over from Indian Hills. And I'm here in support of our neighbors on Indian Hills. I really do believe it needs to stay R one. It would be way too many people. And just, I know it's just a preliminary plan, but if you look at that, it's just, they're just so close together, I can't imagine that any of these people could, should have to do, have to put up with this, I guess. There are new houses on either side of this lot. I don't know if you're here, the people that don't know us, but I'm sure they didn't know about it when they built. So I would like to say that I disagree with it also.
Thank you. Yes, please come forward. State your name for the record.
My name is Shirley Richter, and I've, I'm at thirty-seven twenty-nine Indian Hills, and I've been there for twenty-six years. And we were also told that it was going to be a park. I did not know until today that if you change it to R one, they can only put one house there. And that would not be, I would not go along with that. I think that they would be able to divide that and build nice homes like we have on our street, that sounds to me. These other things might look like a house, but there's the size of an apartment, if that big. And I think that's just terrible to stick that in that area, just terrible. Highly against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please come forward. State your name for the record.
Hi there. Good morning. Miles Nelson. I live at one-twenty at Comon Boulard here in town, nowhere near this area. But I do want to talk about just, if we're going to be talking about planning and zoning and that sort of thing, the area that, if we're trying to develop like Havasu, the, I believe that Mahavi County did a great job with its general plan. I've went over that a couple times. And if, are we able to bring up the map showing the parcels as well as the R three lots below this parcel that we're talking about?
Can you put that on the screen?
But while we're talking about this, we're talking about the zoning and using things for different-
There we go. Thank you.
Reasons. All of those orange at the bottom are R three lots, so it's not necessarily an island of R one. And we've had several people talk about the R one properties being used, several of those one individual lots being used to combine. And for Havasu and looking at its major overall plan, for each of those lots to be developed on, or having one person instead of up to those ten people, it really affects the future of Lake Havasu as well. So I think that's something that we need to think about in terms of growing Lake Havasu and having the, I guess, housing for those new residents and its growth. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please come to the microphone. State your name again for the
Once again, it's Bob Bishop. Looking at that map that's up there, you see the R three across the bottom with the orange around the two lots. Those two are vacant lots. The first lot to the left of that is a single-family home, even though it's R three. The next to the left of that is two homes facing Sunnybrook. The first lot to the right of the orange line is a triplex. And I have a signature from the people that own the triplex that they don't want the zone changed either. The next two lots to that, to the right, are vacant. The next lot to that, again in the R three zone, is a single-family home. So it is an island, except for a little track to get out to the street. Yes. But you have to understand, putting thirty or forty homes in there, where is anybody going to park? There isn't enough parking. There is no street parking anywhere. And heaven sakes, you guys, you all live in Havasu. Everybody has two cars, or they have a boat, or they have a jet ski, or they have whatever. Where are they going to park? It's ridiculous. We all spent the money. We have a single lot. And by the way, I, I'm going to bring something up in this meeting, just so everybody hears it. That piece of property went up for sale six, eight months ago, whenever it was. There was one sign, not even as big as this podium, that said it was up for auction. And that sign was at the very end of the little patch of orange you see up at the top left. That's the only place it was listed. It may have been in the paper, I don't know, but that's the only place it was listed. Keep in mind to buy a lot here in Lake Havasu right now, it's seventy thousand to a hundred thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand per lot. That lot was listed at two-hundred-and-nine-thousand dollars minimum bid. It's R one. That lot was purchased for two-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand dollars. It's over five acres. None of us, the only people that saw that sign was myself because I live right next to that sign, and the two people across the street from me. It was ridiculous the way it was done and the way it was handled. So just once again, the amount of people, the amount of traffic, there are children walking down the streets all the time, no sidewalks. They're walking to school, and as was said earlier, that there are, Plan High School, there is a school there, and there's two nursery schools there, as well as a couple of churches. It is an island. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience want to address the commission before I close the public hearing? All right, with that, I'll close the public hearing. Before I bring it back to staff, I just wanted to point out a couple of things that were mentioned. Technically, it's not spot zoning because it does adjoin in a tremendous amount of R three. However, it does obviously project deep into an existing established R one area. And yes, it was always been a Lake Havasu City parcel. I'm sure there were a number of uses discussed publicly or not publicly about what it may or may not be in the future. Bottom line is, today it is an R one parcel, and it is important to note and clarify because it was discussed that while it is one parcel today, you can only build one home on that. It is entitled, as an R one property, to have up to four units per acre if it goes through the subdivision process. That does not require a rezone if they were to go that direction. So ultimately, they could build up to twenty units on that parcel following the subdivision process. That would be a public process as well. But that is an entitled use, and they would have to build within the R one single-family requirements in order to do that in the future. So with that, I'll take it back to staff for, I'm sorry. Would the applicant, yes, I'm sorry, would the applicant like to address any of those comments? Thank you.
So I'm just going to go down the line of the notes that we made. On these units, it was, it was surprising who's buying these units. We thought it would be-
Would you state your name again? I'm sorry.
Sam Woods.
Thank you.
We thought, who is buying the units was very surprising to us. We thought it might be snowbirds, younger people. It was retired couples with one car, and, and they're not buying them for vacation homes. They're actually living in them. So that was just interesting. We didn't expect that. Far as the units on that single family, you're right. There's about twenty, you could go ten to nine thousand square feet per lot in, in that little Indian Hills thing, which brings you like twenty, twenty-something houses, plus the, the two on Buena Vista, which maybe you could put seven units alone right there. So the density is almost the same, except when you factor in that there's more bedrooms in the single-family homes, which is going to drive the car, the traffic up to, instead of having forty, you're going to have roughly eighty-one cars coming and going out of there, plus the boats, the trailers, the storage. Where on these, these developments that we're doing, we're restricting them. There are no boats. There are no trailers. All your cars have to be in designated spots. Far as parking, we're only allowed to put forty in here, as we discussed, so there'll be more parking. You know, there'd be a, maybe a community center. We don't know until this, this goes through all the way. We have CCNRs in there. So far as people thinking in that they're little units and they're going to get trashy, no, it's an H O A. You know, you've got to close your garage door. It's, it's whatever we put in there is they have to abide by. So far as it going down in value, it's not going to happen. Value, there's a good question. Everybody's worried about their, their price going down on their houses. On a square-footage price, being the cheapest thing on the market in Lake Havasu for a single-family resident condominium, we range from two-hundred-and-eighty-eight to three-hundred-and-forty-four, three-hundred-and-fifty-four a square foot, which is a lot greater than a single-family resident, but it's still the cheapest thing on the market. You know, we could market these things for under two-hundred. Or a normal house is costing, what, three, three-fifty? Far as the, the people going around there, we could actually gate this whole community. So it would be an island in its own. So there wouldn't be people coming in and going out of it. And I think that was all of it. Yeah, that'll work. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you go, does the commission have any questions of the applicant?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
Sir, I have several questions. First of all, bring me up to speed, if you will. Are these units you're proposing, are they basically cookie-cutter units where they're all going to be the same or close to the same?
On, on this particular project?
Yes.
We were going to mix it up. I didn't, literally on that, that plot plan that we submitted, if we spent twenty minutes on that, I'd be surprised. We were just trying to figure out what we could do. I didn't want to spend a lot of money on development until we know we have some rules that we could abide by.
And they're all one or two stories? Or all two stories? Or all one story?
No, there's, there's a seventeen-foot limit on R three. Is that right?
I'm sorry, say again?
I think that's a seventeen-foot limit.
The, the R three, if I may, the R three zoning district has a maximum of fifteen feet building.
The problem that I see, and, 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 we've gone through this over the last years, parking becomes an issue. It, it, it's actually caused neighbors to have fights over parking, and it's caused problems for the city over parking. And in these units I'm looking at, and like this other gentleman said, if you've got two cars in the family and you've got a jet ski and a boat, or whatever the toys are, and this is a toy town, you, you're going to have, not going to have room to put boats in the back or the front or the side. That's not going to happen. So there, you're going to have a problem with that. And, and parking. I lived in a, a situation years ago in California where a guy tried to put as many homes as he could in, and he put in a nice pool, he put in a nice tennis court, he did all those things. But what he didn't, when he got all done, he didn't realize that the American public as a whole are a little- as a whole are a little lazy. And if you live in a division like that, and the pool's over there, and you live over here, you don't walk in your bathing suit all the way over there, what you want to do is drive over to there. Now you've got no parking over there. And it becomes a real thing, when you try, my experience with this, is if you try to stuff more stuff that should, more things in an area shouldn't be, that it's going to have problems. And you're going to have problems, and my humble thoughts are that it could be hard to sell. You couldn't sell me one, because I know, living here all these years, and what goes on in this city, the people that buy homes here, my lord, look at, they come here, and they can't wait to build an RV garage that's 40 feet long, that they could put six boats in, and two bars. And that's what they, that's why they came here. And this situation here, trying to cram this many structures into that, and like this gentleman said, parking, now it's Christmas time, and every one of those people in those 40 homes, or however many that you're talking about, they're, all their families are coming. Now you've got 40 homes with families coming there for Christmas, holidays, birthdays, whatever. Now where do they park?
So when we build these things, we develop an HOA. Okay? In the HOA, like Esperanza, there's no, there's like three spots parking for guests. How do we, how do we get around that? In the HOA, which you have to read before you buy it, you have a parking garage, you must park your car there. That's it. No questions.
Oh, by the way, I have one more question, thank, I'd hate to interrupt you. On these homes you have, you need one or two-car garages?
It's not developed. It could be one, there'll probably be, there'll probably be one, it could be two, just depends which way it goes.
Well, see, now that creates a problem if there's one, because if it's a two-car garage, like most of the cities in this town, if they have cars and a boat, they have a two-car garage, they can park two things in the garage, and two things outside of the garage on their property. And that would take care of part of the problem.
In the HOA, you're not allowed to bring boats, you're not allowed to bring trailers. So the market that you're talking about is not our market. You know, the guy that's washing your car, he cannot buy a house here. My own sons cannot buy a house here, because the cost is driven up so high. So this, even though the seniors have been buying these so far, I have figured out a way to make it so you can get a conventional loan on it, which was one of our problems in the earlier developments. I couldn't get financing after the 2008 pop, because the banks cranked everything down and said, "No more condos." So now we've figured a way that you can get a 4% down and go and own one of these things, instead of renting. So all those people that nobody thinks about, that's what this was driven from originally. You know, they don't have money for a boat, they don't have the quads, they don't have, they just want not to rent. So that's the answer to this. You know, where will it go? I don't know.
All right, thank you very much.
You know, and as far as the parking, that, mind you, how many units, I think there's 70 in there or something. That gets shrunk down to 40, so there will be a lot of parking. You know, it just...
Well, you know, in my opinion...
I mean, I...
You would have to short it down from 40, because you couldn't put all that you want to put in there.
Exactly, exactly.
And that piece of ground. It's just not going to happen.
No, it's not going to happen, but the HOA will still have the rules, so you're not going to have boat storage there, you're not going to have all that stuff that you're talking about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions, I guess, first of all, by commissioners? Yes, Ms. Ballard?
I have one question. So you're purporting that this is going to be similar to what's existing in Lake Havasu now in London Greens, where there is a development out in the middle of the golf course that has two-car garages, where you're required to park inside your garage, and you have limited guest parking, no boats, no trailers allowed. It is an island, it is in the RE-zoned area, but it is townhomes. Similar to that?
Similar to that. These are, none of these are attached even by a fence, so they're literally standalone, but, so they're not multifamily.
What's the average square footage of your home?
Lately, it's been 600 to 700 on projects like these. You know, if I go single-family, then I don't know what it's going to be. You know, maybe we'll just put a bunch of four-bedrooms in there, I don't know.
All right, thank you.
All right, any other questions by the commission? All right, thank you, Sam. At this point, I'll go back to Mr. Morris for his comments and recommendations from staff. I'm sorry, the public hearing is closed at this point. I'm sorry, thank you. Mr. Morris?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, thank you. Staff finds that the proposed rezoning meets all the requirements set forth in 140504L of the Development Code. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends the Planning Commission recommend approval of Land Use Action 19-2205 with the following conditions. One, the project is not to exceed 6.99 units per acre. Two, the project shall consist of detached single-family units. And three, formal design review shall be required. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this point, we'll come back to the commission for questions, comments, discussion.
Luke, I have one question of you. The way we vote today, what does that mean? Are we going to have another shot at this, if this gentleman changes things? Or what we vote now is it?
Well, thank you for the question. This is an item for you, for your consideration, and for your recommendation for the city council. So if your recommendation is to deny, if your recommendation is to approve, your recommendation is to approve with other conditions, whatever your recommendation is at this meeting, will go on to the city council, whether you approve or deny, whatever.
What I thought.
And it'll go to them on January, their January 14th meeting of next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments, questions by commission, before we take or entertain a motion?
Susanna, just a discussion with you. Do you know how big the units are in London Greens?
I believe they run from about 1,800 to 2,400 square feet.
Yeah.
Consistent with, are there RE homes in the area?
Thank you. We are at the table for continued discussion and/or a motion on this item. I guess I'll just state, and personally, I do support what BuiltWell is doing around town. It is desperately needed in this community to have some smaller product at a lower price point. You know, that being said, it's difficult in this situation because of how far it projects back into an existing single-family neighborhood. It'd be different if a lot of the lots were vacant, and it wasn't so built out, but it obviously has a pretty direct and hard impact on the existing neighborhood. So it is a different, a difficult item, I think, for us and for the council. That's just my thoughts on the item at this point. Anyone else have any comments, questions?
I'll add to that, Michael, because I, I mean, I absolutely love this project. I think it's, it's a really great project, but, you know, if it was pushed at the end of maybe between R3 and R4, where R1 met with R3 or R4, I think that would be a little different. We need projects like this, we need housing like this. But I think that, given the circumstances, that, you know, a developer mitigates their risk whichever way it's going to go. And I think it could be a little too far-reaching in this circumstance.
Thank you. Other comments or a motion? Mr. Bergen?
I have looked over these, this property, and the existing houses are very nice houses that border this. If you lived in a, in one of those, you owned and lived in one of those houses, how would you like having two or three new houses built adjacent to your back lot line? And the whole thing just totally filled with 40 houses back there? It just does not make any sense. I, if I owned a house there, I'd be very, very upset. And I, that's all.
Any other comments, questions, or we are at the table for a motion? Ms. Ballard?
I make a motion that in regards to this request for rezoning, that the, for lack of a motion, the request be denied.
We have a motion for denial? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to...
I'm sorry, no. It's, you either, you're going to either motion to recommend approval to the city council, or you're going to recommend to not recommend, or you're going to motion to not recommend approval by the city council. So we're not denying or approving, but you're just, you're making, the board, the commission today is making a recommendation to the city council. I apologize. So...
If I may amend my motion, I make a recommendation not to approve to, before we do the city council on this act.
And second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to recommend nonapproval of this action to the city council. Any other discussion before we vote?
I second it.
We have a motion and a second already. Any other discussion or comment? Again, I will just state that I think this is an important thing you're trying to do, I appreciate it. If this parcel were a different shape, maybe condensed a little bit tighter to the R3 neighborhood, without so many impacts to all of these existing single-family homes, it might be different, but in reference to what my motion will be, it's just hard to support in this condition. So with that, we'll take a vote. And for clarity here, this is a recommendation to disapprove, so if you are not in favor of... Yeah. A yes vote would be to disapprove the motion. A no vote would be to approve the motion. Okay. Thank you. That could have got really confusing.
Yes on no.
Okay, so the motion is to not recommend approval, so a yea vote is in support of not recommending approval. A nay vote is, would support the action. A yea vote will, a yea vote is for nonapproval.
A nay vote, right.
Is a non-recommendation.
A yea. A yes vote is for nonapproval. A no vote is for approval. Anyone have any questions on that?
Motion passes 6 to 0.
So the motion to recommend disapproval to council passed 6 to 0. At this point, just for clarity for the audience, this will go to the council still, but the recommendation to council will be for not supporting it. This same open forum will happen at city council on January 13th, 14th. I suggest you all come in attendance and, in the same fashion. All right, the next item on the agenda today. ID number 19-2201, a request to rezone Track 100, Block 9, Lot 54, 2105 Moye Drive, from MU NPD, Mixed-Use Neighborhood Plan Development District, to RUMS, Residential Uptown McCulloch Main Street District. Mr. Morris?
Yes, Commissioner, excuse me, Chairman of Commissioners, thank you. As you mentioned, this project is, property is located at 2105 Moye Drive. It's in the lower part of the Main Street area, if you will. The project, the property is located at the, I'll call it the north, I guess northeast corner of Moye and Smoke Tree Avenue, north. Here's the current zoning for the property. Right now, it measures, the property measures about two-thirds, excuse me, one-third of an acre. It's just one piece here. It's about six feet above the street level, and it's vacant right now and undeveloped. A little history of the property. In January of 2010, it was rezoned from what was then R3 zoning to commercial office planned development for a professional office building. That office building project was not constructed, and as I mentioned, the property is still undeveloped and vacant. In February of 2016, our development code was updated. Among the changes was, the old CO, Commercial Office Zoning Designation, got renamed, if you will. It's now called Mixed-Use Neighborhood. And so this property is going from Mixed-Use Neighborhood Plan Development to, they're requesting to Residential UMS. Now, if you look at the map here, this blue area here, around the project, the subject property, is zoned RUMS. That's the zoning district, they're asking for this piece to be removed from, or that PD removed, and rezon it to RUMS, the same as the other properties adjacent to it, and south across Moye Drive. At this point, this property in its current zoning is the only commercially zoned property on that block. The owner has not, or an applicant has not discussed specific development plans at this point with staff, but any future development would need to meet the development standards for the RUMS, and will have to go through a design review by staff. So with that, I conclude my presentation. Open any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. This is a public hearing. First, I'll ask if the applicant's present, and if they wish to address the commission. Please come to the microphone, state your name for the record.
Sam Woods. We're going to do something like this. The Riverwalks, on the corner.
All right. That is a condo, multi-unit condo project, in essence.
Yeah, just three stories. And that one's already been approved.
Any questions by the commission or the applicant? Thank you. I'll give you an opportunity at the end to come back if there's questions. At this point, I'll open up to the public. Does anyone in the public wish to address the commission on this item? Please come to the microphone and state your name for the record.
My name is Chris Johnson. I've lived in Havasu for 50 years, and I've been at my home on Sunray Drive, which is kind of kitty corner and back. Go left with your arrow, a little bit right. I'm in the second lot in on Sunray, on the other side of that street. Yeah, right there, about where you were. And that's our pool, right, yeah, right there, that's our pool. So if they build a, we have a large wall around our backyard, because there are apartments behind us. We don't have a lake view, but we have a gorgeous sunset view every night, where we sit on our patio, and eat dinner, and watch a sunset, and look over our pool. And if they build a three-story condo, or four of them, I believe they're going to build, behind us, we'll be looking at people looking into our yard, or blocking totally our view of the sunset. And I'm not against building something there, but I think three stories high is just a little out of the question, because the other one he's done, we can see from the left corner... one he's done, we can see from the left corner of our yard when we look towards Smith's, and it's huge and it's obstructive and it's, it's just, it doesn't fit in with everything else in that unit, in that area. Like I said, I'm not against building something there, but that tall, I'm against, and I don't know if that's even what's up on the agenda right now, but I have really strong feelings that three-story units, four of them there, would seriously affect my views and my property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wish to address the commission? Does the applicant want to say anything additional at this time?
Sam Woods, just to clarify for her, that, that zoning is forty-two feet high. So, I mean, I have not even come close to pushing that, but whoever else buys anything around there is going to, that's, that's the rezone for downtown, revitalization plan. But that outlay, and that's, that was, that's why that outlay is there. They want to get X amount of people in so many years to live downtown.
I'm sorry, ma'am. Nobody can, nobody can hear you. You're not being recorded and...
I'll allow you to come back in a second.
Anybody could, even if it's, if it's left commercial, you could still go forty-two feet high.
Thank you. Mr. Morris, can you, currently it is on Mixed Use Neighborhood PD. What is the current height limitation in that district?
Well, that, part of that PD request was to allow, I believe it was thirty-six feet in height. Let's see. I think we have a slide here for it.
Don't sit down yet, Sam.
All right. So the original, the PD that is currently zoned, there's, here's Smoke Tree, there's Moyau, here's where the building was proposed, and here's where the parking and whatnot are over here on, coming off of Moyau. They were proposing, it's hard to see, but thirty feet high is what's approved there right now. So they asked for, part of their PD request was to go above the twenty-five feet that was allowed previously to thirty feet.
So currently, it's thirty, and this new zoning district would allow up to forty-two?
Correct.
Applicant is saying it might not be that high. Okay.
My question to the applicant is, what are your, I'm not going to ask you what you're going to build on this, because if it passes, you could build up to forty-two feet. But currently, you have a project like this, you're already building. What is the overall height of that building?
I want to say it's like thirty-two or something.
Okay.
And then, you know, there again, you're right. And if those don't sell, I'm, that I'll do it again. You know, it's just, I'm testing. Nobody's done this. You know, I was hoping these would be more for the millennials, because they have a thirty-two-foot garage and they have stairs though.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ma'am, would you like to address the commission on anything else? Thank you. Anybody in the audience want, anybody, any further comments from the public before I close the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to staff for comment and recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff finds the proposed rezoning meets all the requirements set forth in section fourteen oh-five oh-four K. Based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends that planning commission recommend approval, rezoning tract one hundred, block nine, lot fifty-four, twenty-one oh five Moyau Drive, from mixed, from MU NPD District to R UMS District. Thank you.
Thank you. Commission, any comments, questions of staff or on this item?
One question.
Yes, Ms. Ballard?
Go ahead. It's my understanding that this, this application that's before us today is only to change the zoning on the lot. It doesn't have anything to do with what will be built on the property. Is that correct?
That's correct. They're asking to rezone it from the current planned development zoning to a straight-up R UMS, and they'll have to meet all the development codes requirements for the new zoning district, the residential Main Street McCulloch District.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson?
This is a tough one because the, I understand what, what the neighbor's saying because something goes up and, and your life changes. But all of those, you know, depending on what happens with property density and values and everything in the future, someone could potentially, on the lot right behind, they could, they could take down the structure and build up to that forty-two-foot heights restriction. So this, this is a, it's a difficult one because we, we love and want to support our neighbors, but someone, we could deny this and something could go up anyway. And that's the, that's the hard thing about this. This particular property looks like it's sticking out like a sore thumb and, you know, to have something commercial there, you know, it's, it goes one way or another. We, we, we had a proposal at one time to, for a storage unit complex, and, and the, the neighbor said, this is going to ruin my property values. And the, it was contiguous, except for this one lot was R four. And on that particular property, you could have, you know, like we were discussing, you could have dozens and dozens and dozens of units, and, and they could go so high. And later on, that applicant, after the storage complex was built, they, they had a pretty quiet little neighborhood, and, you know, not a lot of traffic going in and out because they had a wall of storage units protecting them. And their property value actually went up, and they, it was a brand-new construction home. They sold the house because the property value soared. With that being said, this is a very similar situation where the overall zoning would actually complement what's going on around and may be a benefit to you rather than a hindrance. And that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Other comments, questions by the commission, or I'll entertain a motion on this item? We are at the table for a motion. Anybody?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve ID nineteen dash twenty-two zero-one, a request to rezone tract one hundred, block nine, lot fifty-four, twenty-one oh five Moyau Drive, from MU dash NPD, Mixed Use Neighborhood Plan Development District to R UMS, Residential Uptown McCulloch Main Street District.
Motion by Commissioner Nelson, any-
A second.
A second, by Commissioner Ballard. Any other comments, questions? Not, we'll go ahead and vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Congratulations. Our last item today, ID nineteen dash two-two-zero-nine, a discussion of multiple potential amendments to Title fourteen zoning development code relating to permitted uses, Table three dash one, to add permitted and accessory uses to all zoning districts and any additional amendments necessary to definitions and section references as a result of changes to Table three dash one. Mr. Morris?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. As you mentioned, this is a discussion item only. We won't, the, the commission won't be making a recommendation at this point. We're just trying to get some ideas, some input from staff, so we can come back at your next meeting and make some, a more formal presentation about what, what you think changes you would like to see to the uses table. A little bit of background, the development code was updated and adopted in 2016. Over those past three years, there have been a month, nine, a number of minor issues that have been identified and revised. In November of 2017, about a dozen code changes were made to that section, to the development code, and then eight additional changes were approved last year in August. Again, while applying the development code permitted uses table, it's come to our attention that some of the specific uses in their allowed zoning districts may need to be revised. Some specific examples include, like adding medical offices and clinics to the mixed use UMS, the downtown area, separating animal boarding and animal care, breaking those two apart and applying them a little differently, adding alcoholics, alcohol beverage sales in the commercial health district, and potentially adding the caretakers or watchmen's quarters as an accessory use in some commercial areas. And we thought, well, if we're going to take some items pertaining to the use table to the commission, how about we take this opportunity to look at the, the use table as a whole, and just after three years of going through it, see if there's maybe some other changes we would like to make at that point, too. So with that, we're asking that you have, you all have a copy of this PDF of the, the current use table with some notes on here. So I'll just, if you don't mind, just go over generally and show what we're proposing here. And then you're going to have homework, review this, and then come back at the, our, our next meeting with thoughts, your thoughts on what, what your thoughts are on some of these potential changes. So in this table, let's see if I can zoom in some more here. How do I do this? There we go. I was hoping I can zoom in. Nope, can't do it. All right. But the, anything that's been highlighted in yellow is a change in the table. So go over the table generally. If it has a letter P in the, in that cell, it's a permitted use. So these are generally grouped by type of use. So we have residential, public, and institutional, commercial, and so on. And then we have the different zoning districts across the top. So if, if it's highlighted, this is a potential change that staff is kicking around. So we're saying residential care facility, why don't we allow those as permitted uses in these zoning districts? And there's also some notes on the side here that pertain to other sections of the code that may need to be changed, things like the definitions, and then the specific use, use, specific standards for each of those different change, potential changes. So in this case, we're saying, hey, we might want to change the definition of residential care facility so it matches the building and fire codes and, and add some other comments to the use specific standards. So if we go through this, we're asking that you would review this for what your thoughts are and have, be ready to enter into more detailed discussion at our next meeting. So this is the three pages of the development code. And with that, I, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I have a question, Luke. Where on the permitted uses can we find uses for churches?
They're under Religious Facility on the first page.
I see it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Luke. I think this is good. Obviously, yeah, I think it would be very valuable for all of us to take a little time between here and the next meeting and go through this and see if there's anything that anyone else feels needs to be addressed. Does anyone on the commission, have they had a chance to review it? Did they have anything they'd like to add today? If so, let's talk through it.
Luke, I just, I just wanted to ask a question. Do you think, within this document, there's anywhere that we could apply setbacks?
Well, within this uses table, it doesn't address the specific development standards for each of the zoning districts in the, in this permitted uses table. The setbacks would be based on the zoning district. So that would be a change to a different portion of the development code. It'd be a change to whatever that specific zoning category is. So if you're looking at changing setbacks or modifying those, this is not the, the best, this is not the, the table or the portion of the code to revise. You'd want to look at that specific zoning district and then make changes to that. So what we're asking for here is just looking at the development code permitted uses table. We're not necessarily asking for input on other aspects of the development code.
You could have just said no. Just kidding.
Thank you, Luke. Anybody have anything else they want to discuss on this item today? All right. Seeing none, again, I would encourage you all to go through this. I think it is an important little step once in a while to check in on this stuff. So thank you for presenting it. We do have our homework.
If, if any commission members do find something, if you could just let Luke know or Stuart know or someone know beforehand, just so we can include it in the notice that we're going to have to provide, because we're going to have to list everything that we're going to discuss.
Sure.
So don't hold it in. If you do find something that you think want to add, just let us know, and then we can make sure it's on the agenda so we can properly discuss it at the meeting.
Because at the next meeting, it will come back as an action item.
It's going to come back, yep, as the action item. So it, it's not, if you think of something on the spot, not a problem, but if you know in your mind prior to, that would help us out a lot.
Yeah, let's try to address whatever we can ahead of time, for sure.
And good job today, Michael. Way to go.
Thank you. Do I have to close that item, or is it? No, okay. At this point, we're down to the call to the public. We're done with our public hearing. Would anybody in the audience like to address the commission on any item today? Thank you, sir. Seeing none, we'll close the call to the public. Luke, future meetings?
Yes, thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. The meeting scheduled for December fourth has been canceled. We don't have any items for that. The next regular scheduled meeting will be December eighteenth. At this point, we'll have the permitted uses table on that. We don't have any other applications right now. If something were to come up, of course, we, in a timely manner, we could add it to that meeting.
We don't have anything at this point.
Only thing we have for the eighteenth is the permitted uses table, your homework that you're going to do and come back. Yep.
Okay. Thank you. That's it today. We stand adjourned.